Seeing none, we will move on to our favorite part of the meeting, which is celebrating excellence. And I will turn this item over to Superintendent Noon.
Well, good evening to everybody. Chairperson McPherson, trustees and members of Administrative Council in attendance this evening. It's my pleasure to introduce our celebrating excellence item based on the ribbon skirt teachings. With us this evening, I hope, I'm just looking around here. I'm not sure that I see Chantel Bellicky. Oh, there she is, right there. With us this evening to share their experience of the ribbon skirt teachings are Brevert Park School Principal, Ms. Chantel Bellicky. Welcome, Chantel, along with Brevert Park Parent, Ms. Carol Whitecalf. And I think you're there with Chantel and Brevert Park Grade Two Student, Ms. Kadri Bear. Ms. Bellicky, I will turn things over to you, please.
When Brevert Park School committed to learn about the ribbon skirt teachings and to host a virtual assembly as a way to honor Indigenous ways of knowing, being and doing, we anticipated it would have an impact on our staff and our student body. What we didn't expect, but probably should have, was the outpouring of support we would receive from our larger Brevert Park community and our families. Our families who are new to these teachings expressed that they were proud of the important work we were engaging in as a school to bring attention to relevant real world issues. Our families who were already deeply connected to these teachings expressed how our ribbon skirt day allowed their children to be seen, heard and acknowledged. As many families joined our virtual assembly to learn alongside us and from the teachings of traditional knowledge keeper Judy Gray Eyes, our Grade Two Student Kadri Bear was also a leader as she shared her own ribbon skirt teachings with us. It is my pleasure to introduce to you today Ms. Carol Whitecalf and her daughter, Ms. Kadri Bear, who will share what the day meant to them as a parent and as a student of Brevert Park School.
You see her? There we go. Say hello.
Hi.
Hi there. My name's Carol Whitecalf and this is my daughter Kadri Bear. And she would like to introduce herself.
Hi.
Hi, welcome to our meeting.
Hi.
What's your name?
Kadri Bear.
What's your Cree name?
Tipscow Pissamisqueo Moon Woman.
So her Cree name is Tipscow Pissamisqueo, which means moon woman. And some of her teachings, she actually has a Kukum sister in the division. And who is that?
Kukum.
Kukum who? Kukum Judy. Kukum Judy and Kadri have the same Cree name. So she was pretty excited on the day of the ribbon skirt teaching assembly because Kukum Judy and her were matching, are wearing the matching skirts. And they were in two different locations and neither of them knew they were wearing the same skirt. One of the teachings that we appreciate in our family is that we wear skirts that have meaning to us. And her skirts, both of their skirts were with the same fabric and they were made by my mother, mother-in-law, sorry, her Kukum. And it's full of moons in the color purple, which is their favorite colors. So that was pretty special and she was pretty happy when Kukum Judy was wearing the same skirt as her. And how come skirts are important to us, Kadri?
It's important for ceremonies.
In our culture?
In our culture.
Yes. So in our home, I am Cree from Sweetgrass and Ojibwe from a reserve in Ontario called Chip of the Temps. So we have a bit of a mishmash of our tradition and our culture. And we share that with Kadri and that's what she's grown up with at home. One of the things that I really appreciated and was very fortunate to witness with the assembly with Brevert Park is the care and the research and the learning that went on before the actual ribbon skirt day. I was so proud of Shanna and Chantel with all of the work that was very evident that they put into everything before they did this presentation of the assembly. I watched the whole thing and I was so proud. I was like, they did so much work. I had no idea that they had done that much work prior. It was just so nice, so nice to see it all. And when somebody who is not First Nations is approaching, teaching other people as they did, I'm so happy that they did it in an appropriate and a way that was good for our protocols. And a lot of people are scared to wear a ribbon skirt. And lots of different people have different knowledge about the way things should go. And I think the biggest takeaway from it is, is that it's not necessarily a fashion statement, but anybody can wear one, but you need to have the time and you need to have the care to have the teachings behind wearing it and wear it with honor. And I think that Shanna and Chantel did a fabulous job with that this year. Do you want to say how happy you were to be attending with Ms. Bellicky at Ribbon Skirt Week and Day? She's being shy now. She's usually very chatty.
We wore the skirts together on the same day.
Uh huh.
Took lots of pictures together to send to mom.
Yeah.
Yes, Kadri was very, very happy. She asked her teacher to take pictures of her and Ms. Bellicky because they were wearing ribbon skirts on the same days when it wasn't technically ribbon skirt day yet. So she was pretty happy that someone else was wearing a ribbon skirt with her. Yeah, but it was, it was good. I'm very proud of these guys. They did a great job.
They might have a few questions for you already, if they have a couple of questions to ask you.
Thank you very much for, for sharing your experience. And I'll just open it to trustees who might want to ask some questions. You can just raise your hand if you have a question or comment. I see trustee Bellamy.
Hi, thanks for coming on Kadri and Carol. I'm curious if Kadri, you can tell me what was your favorite part of the ribbon skirt day? And I have a question for your mom too, and you're done.
What was your favorite part?
That I got to share about a ribbon skirt.
That's awesome. I would love to hear what you shared, but I won't put you on the spot right now. Thank you, Kadri. And Carol, from your perspective, what is the one thing when you said you were proud? Was there one thing in particular that was shared or that was expressed or that you saw that really stood out?
I think just in general, they did a great job. But the thing that impressed me the most is just the work and the time and the research that they very evidently spent leading up to the ribbon skirt day. Time that they spent with Tim, the time that they spent with Judy. They, they did our traditional offerings in the most technological protocol kind of way with the tobacco offerings. They've just, I mean, for lack of a better word, they really did their homework and did the school proud with everything that they've done.
That's awesome. Thank you. Thanks for sharing today.
Any trustees want to ask questions or comment? Trustee Brennan.
Hi, I, I got to be a part of that teaching Kadri as well. And it was really great to see all the work the kids did as well. So I just wanted to say congrats to you and to your mom and, and to your principal because it was an excellent presentation. So thanks.
Thank you.
Trustee Anderson.
They did a really great job and I'm, I'm looking forward to when I can see these in person. Hopefully next year, I'm going to cross my fingers. And this question is to the, the teacher that I think is outside of this screen. When we meet again, is there any plans when we can meet again as a bigger public to kind of invite more of the public into, into the schools for ceremonies like this?
We had our very first ribbon skirt day at Brevert Park School and we hope it won't be our last. What we hope is that it would be something that's a tradition that will now carry on for many years to come. So I would love to, to visit that with my staff if we could open that up to a larger community and maybe have an outdoor event. I know I've been to a few, I think of the Maiti Day of Learning at Westmount School. Or I think about my time at Chief Whitecap School where we did an Indigenous Day of Learning. So there's so many opportunities that are possibilities to come. And I would look forward to any of those.
Thank you.
Great. Well, I have a quick question for Kadri. Do you ever sew with your Kukum? Do you ever sit down with your Kukum when you're sewing ribbon skirts?
No, not with the good.
Granny Kukum lives four hours away in Ochapwase.
Oh.
East of here. So not very often she brings her sewing machine.
Maybe you'll get a chance soon. Well, thank you so much for coming and sharing with us about your event. It just sounds wonderful and I do hope that it happens year after year and that you can be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Thank you, Carol, for spending time.
Yeah, thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Take good care. Thank you. Moving into reports from administration, we have a strategic update on equity. And I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Director Scrimshaw.
Thank you, Chairperson McPherson, and good evening, everyone. As always, it's a pleasure to be here to introduce the strategic plan update and the great efforts by our staff to demonstrate their commitment to this Saskatoon Public Schools strategic plan. Tonight's presentation is a fine example of how teaching and learning in three of our schools is fulfilling the commitment of equity. And I'll just turn it over and ask Superintendent Trish Reeve to introduce her guests, please.
Thank you, Deputy Director Scrimshaw. Good evening, Chairperson McPherson, Director Skirven, trustees and guests. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge and thank Judy Gray Eyes, traditional knowledge keeper from the First Nations Inuit and Maiti Education Unit. Your knowledge and teachings have not only supported the principals here today, but countless others throughout the division. Equity is a foundational commitment in the Saskatoon Public Schools strategic plan. Enacting anti-racist and anti-oppressive practices supports anti-racism, reconciliation, solidarity with Indigenous peoples and freedom of cultural expression for all. Today, Principal Chantel Beleki of Brevert Park School and Principal Tammy Geralamy of Nutana Collegiate will share how they engage staff, students and families in the traditional ribbon skirts teachings. Unfortunately, due to an emergency, Principal Shanna Strubry of Prince Philip School is unable to join us. So I will turn it over to the principals to share the excellent work happening in their buildings.
Good evening, Chairperson McPherson, Director Skirven, trustees and guests. My name is Tammy Geralamy, Principal of Nutana Collegiate, and I am here with Chantel Bellicky, Principal of Brevert Park School. We are missing Shanna Strubry, Principal of Prince Philip, but her story lives in this presentation as well. Thank you for inviting us to share the strategic plan update tonight and how we actualize powerful learning outcomes leading up to ribbon skirt day. Shanna, Chantel and I come to this meeting as non-Indigenous women with diverse experiences in Saskatoon Public Schools. We have different life and learning experiences, but are fortunate to have walked together in the journey as water carriers for the division. Through our connections, relationships and partnerships, we felt ready to begin this work together. However, it was the call to action from Isabella Kulak that ignited our learning journey. The Saskatoon Public Strategic Plan allows us to answer a call to action through many different elements. When we began our planning process, we committed to creating experiences that inspired engaged students in their learning. Our hope is that the deep learning that occurred will ripple from this day forward. This work lives with an academic excellence as we connected through the broad areas of learning and cross-curricular competencies of our Saskatchewan curriculum. Bringing this curricular learning into our classrooms is our schools and divisions' commitment to reconciliation. In our three schools, we each found different ways to meaningfully connect to the deep learning embedded in the stories and teachings of the ribbon skirt. Following our learning, we are also able to reach broader learning themes such as connecting to Black History Month, Pink Week learning and Indigenous storytelling.
It is sometimes a misconception in our schools that our youngest learners do not yet have the maturity to connect with deep, real-world learning outcomes. This couldn't be further from the truth. In fact, these learning expectations live right here in our curriculum. Here are some examples of just a few of the kindergarten to grade 12 outcomes we connected to through our ribbon skirt learning. If we could take you through a journey in each of our classrooms, you would see how learning outcomes were achieved at a deeper level beyond tokenism. These pictures represent just three examples of student work in arts education, social studies and English. The learning that occurred leading up to our ribbon skirt day connected directly to the consentist citizenship work that Prince Philip and Brevert Park School have been a part of through a pilot project. We are grateful for the support of learning consultants Dana Babbie and Lisa Proctor, who helped to create resources alongside us that were grounded in our citizenship competencies, or as we call them, the five ECCs that are listed here. To create opportunities for authentic, relevant learning, engagement is an area we all actively focused on in each of our schools. The event of hosting a ribbon skirt day provided a platform to create authentic and relevant learning for students in kindergarten right through to grade 12. Too often, we shy away from these tough conversations, but Isabella's story was a gift that allowed us to go deeper and bring learning-centered and anti-racist education to our classrooms. Our ribbon skirt learning led to student engagement by creating opportunity for meaningful sharing of personal experiences. We engaged in learning connected to relevant and timely conversations and experiences and created space for sincere, meaningful and deep conversation. When students feel seen, represented and that they belong in our schools, we create a school environment where wellbeing is fostered. At Nutana, staff worked intentionally to create space for student voice, to build community and creating student sense of belonging. In our schools, we each felt a call to this action, but it was made easier to answer this call when we came together to support one another. In our elementary schools, it began with Shanna and myself at Prince Philip and Brevert Park School, connecting with Tammy Geralamy and her students and staff at Nutana Collegiate, who were already further along in their ribbon skirt learning. We certainly felt that we were not alone as we planned for this together. And in fact, these connections made our learning stronger.
At Nutana Collegiate, we are working hard to find ways to balance cultural responsiveness and anti-oppressive education in our classrooms and all school spaces. When I heard about Isabella Kulak and watched the strong women's support and walked with her to school in the ribbon skirts, I thought very deeply what we could do at the school level and felt strongly that we needed to build capacity with the staff before we brought anything to our students. I am so very lucky to have Kathy Waupapa as our partner in our learning and to have Candace Gadwa as one of our teachers. I reached out to two of them and asked what they thought about doing a ribbon skirt workshop for staff and they jumped on it immediately. We had 17 staff join us in this learning opportunity. We began after school in a circle with a smudge. Tobacco and small gifts were given to Kathy and Candace to show our respect and to thank them for their generosity. In this circle, we learned about the ribbon skirt and heard beautiful teachings. We then started cutting out the pattern, ironing the materials and getting onto the sewing machines. For most of us, not only were we learning the First Nations teaching, most of us were also learning how to sew. Because we were beginners, we needed to come back on the Saturday to finish our skirts, which gave us even more opportunity to learn from Kathy and Candace. These two women created a place that was warm, welcoming and safe for us to learn and opened space to ask many questions outside of ribbon skirts. It began deep conversations about how Indigenous content and perspectives can live in all areas of this school and all classrooms, no matter the discipline. Both Kathy and Candace shared stories about their moms, aunties, sisters, daughters, nieces and grandmothers and how they would come together to teach, support and love. It became this amazing place where we as women felt we had permission to be proud and to be strong while still being in a vulnerable place of learning. We decided we are going to wear ribbon skirts to school the following Monday. Before school, as many of us that could, met in the gym to take a picture of our skirts. We then decided to stay in the main hallway to help with our breakfast shareout. Students were so happy to see us in our ribbon skirts. Some said thank you. Some asked if they could make them. Some asked questions about them. Some just smiled and stood with us a little longer than they usually do. None asked why. I was later told by a staff member that it was a bold statement, what we had done. At that time, we didn't feel we were making any statements and we were only sharing our excitement and our pride for what we had done together. Later, I realized that us coming together to wear our skirts initiated great things in our school community and grew well beyond a simple staff workshop. Students started asking if they could make ribbon skirts. Specifically in Ms. Gadwa and Ms. Reed's classroom, students wanted to do something and learn more. A committee was formed and remarkable things happened. Student workshops began, classroom instruction and assignments shifted a little and an amazing energy was initiated. You could feel the excitement and hear the buzz of activity. February 10th was our first Nutana Collegiate ribbon skirt day. The day saw everything from students making ribbon skirts with Candace, making ribbon skirt pins in many classrooms with Kathy. And in two areas of the school, you would have seen our students workshopping spoken word poems and creative writing about Isabella and ribbon skirts. Prior to the day, Kathy, Candace and Nicole Reed were featured in a video discussing the significance of the ribbon skirt and the power ribbon skirts bring to each of them. This video was shared in all of our classrooms and many were showing it on February 10th. As a key part of our ribbon skirt day, our anti-racism coordinator at Nutana, Cody Dill, created a resource for teachers and students that examined the issue through an anti-racist lens. On the Monday before ribbon skirt day, we came together as a full staff in face and virtual and Cody did a run-through of the PowerPoint and modeled how we would bring this conversation into classrooms. With this tool, our teachers were able to help students dialogue and critically analyze the incident in classroom discussions. To cap off our day, the students working with Candace had said, "We need to walk and rock our ribbon skirts." So at lunch, anyone who wanted to come together and walk in support of Isabella met in the gym and we smudged with Kathy to be sure we started in a good way. Candace led our group through the halls of the school. As we walked, there were claps, smiles and healthy supportive shout-outs. Some joined as we walked. With each lap, we saw some of the women in the parade walk a little taller and step a little lighter. It was a very good day at Nutana Collegiate.
Since Shanna is unable to join us today, she's given me permission to share her stories on behalf of Prince Philip School. At the beginning of her planning process, it was important to Shanna to root their school's commitments to ribbon skirt day through the building of relationships. Prince Philip School started their learning journey by connecting as a staff and deciding together that they wanted to engage in learning about ribbon skirts in a way that honored their students and their families. In order to achieve this, they decided to connect directly with their families and talk with them about their own personal stories and teachings of ribbon skirts. In preparing to do this, many teachers, and Shanna included, were nervous about having this conversation. They were nervous about addressing cultural teachings that differed from their own and the evidence of racism that still existed in Saskatchewan. However, through our division's work in anti-racist and anti-oppressive education, her staff recognized that we could only move forward together if we're willing to have these courageous conversations. The conversations that were had with our families were not only open and positive, but allowed for educators to learn from their community and invite parents into their classrooms and share their teachings and knowledge. Many of Shanna's phone calls as principal of her school ended with a mother thanking her for asking questions and for starting the conversation. For the Prince Philip staff, disconnecting and reaching out to families was one of their most powerful and meaningful experiences. In the weeks leading up to our virtual assembly, students engaged in artwork, writing assignments and classroom discussions connected to ribbon skirt teachings and the real-world lessons that connected Isabella's story. I love this piece of writing by one of Prince Philip's primary students as she shares with her teacher that her ribbon skirt is sacred and the ribbon skirt solidarity pins that male students created to wear on the day to show their support as young male allies. As Tammy shared her experience at Nutana with Shanna and I to support us in our ribbon skirt learning, it was clear that her staff had engaged in significant professional development in anti-racist education and had extended opportunities to create ribbon skirts of their own and learn the teachings. At Brevert Park School, this was new learning for our staff. Some of our teachers saw ribbon skirt for the first time as we discussed Isabella's story at a staff meeting. The inquiry model as an instructional approach provided a great opportunity to begin this new learning and to learn alongside our students. Since many of our students were also seeing the ribbon skirt for the first time, we grounded this learning in images and asked students the questions, "What do you notice and what do you wonder?" Traditional knowledge keeper Judy Gray Eyes helped to ground us in this work by sharing the ribbon skirt teachings with us so that we could guide students and staff towards a productive line of inquiry. We were also grateful for the meaningful videos that were created for us by educator Carrie Harper from Chief Whitecap School, Principal Marnie Ross from Eden Bowman Collegiate and students such as Kadri Bear and families from each of our three schools who shared their teachings and stories with us through photos and videos. At Brevert Park, this inquiry study looked different in our primary classrooms than it did when working with our more senior students. For example, in the younger grades, we studied images of the ribbon skirt as we learned to appreciate the uniqueness and the special artistic qualities through which they were made. We used Isabella's story to connect to themes such as kindness, acceptance and self-esteem. In our more senior grades, students connected to the ribbon skirt as a more specific symbol of Indigenous pride, ceremony, femininity, empowerment and how the ribbon skirt has evolved through fashion, art, in times of protest or to bring awareness to Indigenous issues. We focused on images from current events and social media to further our inquiry. Students were able to come prepared with questions for traditional knowledge keeper Judy Gray Eyes at our virtual assembly.
Albert Scott is a person who is a part of my heart and my spirit. I was introduced to him a long time ago when I was vice principal at Evan Hardy Collegiate and Albert was part of our cultural responsive advisory group. Albert had such grace in everything he did and such generosity in how he taught. Each time I sat with him, whether it was just the two of us alone in a room or with a hundred people, I always left with that aha moment and walked away better able to understand something, learn something or see something in a different way. This quote is one he left with our school division to guide us in our journey of cultural responsiveness. Bringing ribbon skirt day into our schools was our way of recognizing Isabella Kulak's bravery and her right to self-expression and self-determination. We hope that moving forward, all schools will find the courage and feel supported as we did to engage students in learning and in conversations that balance the cultural responsive lens with the anti-oppressive one. It is with this learning in our classrooms that we will inspire change and achieve reconciliation. Our heart was warmed to see that with all smart, with our small actions, ripples in the water have started. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share our stories and to celebrate our students and our schools.
Thank you very much. That was a wonderful presentation. We're so sorry that Shanna can't be with us. I'd just like to ask if any trustees have questions or comments? Hand waves. It's so hard to keep track. Trustee Brennan, sorry, trustee Banks after that.
Hi, I don't really have any questions. I was able to, but I just wanted to say it was really nice to have a glimpse into your schools and that the teaching was just fabulous. And I'm just really happy that you're doing this work and just championing a cause that's really close to the hearts of Saskatoon Public Schools and, and our families. So thank you so much.
Trustee Banks.
I just want to say thank you.
I just want to say thank you for your presentation and I think what happened to this little girl Isabella and, and the generosity and the teachings and the outpouring of support for her, not only across her own division, but across this province and across, across this country and the outpouring of support that she received and her family received is just incredible and I'm so impressed with, with everyone. Now, I just have a question and I'm not sure anyone can answer it, but on your ribbon skirt, they're beautiful. I would actually love to take the teachings and sew them. I'm wondering what the different ribbons and the number of ribbons mean?
It's, I can only share with, with you what's been shared with me by previous knowledge keepers and elders that have worked with me. And many of them have been quick to share with me that if you ask one person, just know that that might mean something different to another woman or somebody in a different community. It was shared with me during my time at Princess Alexandra School through some work that we did making some ribbon skirts as a staff that in some Cree cultures that the, the ribbon of red means strength and that often when you might see protests of awareness such as missing and murdered Indigenous women, you see the women wearing red for that reason. Some of the ribbons, some of the colors can connect to different elements in the earth such as water, sun. And it's been shared with me that sometimes the color black is often not worn in some communities because it can represent maybe a darker side. And that's just how it's been shared to me, but of course, I am not a knowledge keeper. Those are just some of the traditions that have been shared with me. There might be somebody in this room that could better answer that question.
Thank you. That, that helps. And yes, if anybody else has any more information to share, that would be wonderful.
And I have, I can share too, just from working with both Kathy and Candace. They did not talk about the, the number of ribbons or the colors or anything. What they shared with us is that each skirt tells a story. And I actually have two skirts gifted to me and I could share the story of those. And then it was really interesting when our student, when our staff came together to create their skirts, as we chose the material and chose the ribbons, there was a reason for everything that was done. So it was really quite beautiful to hear the thought and love that went into each skirt. And, and that was the story that we learned from Kathy and from Candace was each skirt tells its own story. And that's what I was a part of and witnessed as well.
Trustee Arnison?
Yes, I just wanted to know with you two ladies, what was one thing that you personally learned? Or what was your greatest takeaway from this wonderful project that you embarked on?
You know, for me, I've, I've been trying to be a part of this work in some way for quite some time. The, the two things, takeaways was when the women came together to create those skirts, just the feeling in the room, it's really hard to describe that, but it was just this amazing feeling of women coming together and learning from each other. And then the other stories had to do actually with one of our EAL students who was working with Candace to create a ribbon skirt and she shares a story of, of, you know, many similar things from her, her, where she was from. But she said to, to Candace, "I've learned so many things that are not positive about First Nation peoples when I came into Canada, when I came into Saskatoon. It is not true. From what I'm seeing here, this is what I think of the people and it's such a wonderful thing." And then she gifted her skirt to her teacher and it was like tears crying and everywhere that was going on. So again, just that power of the skirt really brought wonderful things into our, into our environment. So it had to do a little bit with that empowerment piece for me was the, the great takeaway.
There were two pieces of our whole journey that really stood out for me. One was if you think our kids aren't watching us, we're absolutely wrong about that. Our kids are watching our every move. We have some students at Brevert Park School, we don't have many First Nations and METI students at Brevert Park School. But we do have one student in particular who's, who's a very quiet student. And I saw her come alive when we did different presentations in the class or when we did our inquiry work in her classroom. She freely put her hand up to share her knowledge, to share the experience of the skirt that she had at home. And so when we talk about what it means to have engaged students, I think that that was just a prime example of how our students are engaged when our work is relevant. And the second takeaway I have is just how important it is to not embark on important work alone and you always have a team behind you and know the limits of your own knowledge, know what you do know and what you can lead in and know that it's okay to ask for help from those around you. And that's exactly what we did together. The three of us came together. We leaned on each other's staff, each other's families and with the support of traditional knowledge keepers that we had connections with. And it was, the day couldn't have been more powerful because of the collaboration.
Trustee Bellamy?
Yeah, thank you so much for sharing. That was profound and I'm envious of all the learning you got to have those days, but so grateful. And as I've said before, I just am always so, I guess excited is the right word for the changes in the division from like when I went to school, the learnings I had compared to what the staff and the students have the opportunity to learn now. And I'm just so grateful that we're moving the right way and I know we have a ways to go, but wow, those, these kids are going to grow up with a much different understanding of the communities and the land that we share. So that's awesome. My question, I guess, is around like ribbon shirts for men. And do they, do you know if they represent the same type of thing as a woman, as a ribbon skirt? And is there opportunity for the students who are male to participate aside from the pin, which was a wonderful idea? I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for them to make their own ribbon shirts or, or something else that would be ceremonial that they can kind of wear proudly as well?
Sherman, I'll speak to that. In our video, you actually saw Chris Roy, our Vice Principal, and he was wearing his ribbon shirt.
Yes, I did see that.
I grabbed him to bring him in and I was so thankful that he did wear his on that day. Ribbon shirt teachings are not our teachings to share. It's a men's teaching. And so if Tim was here, he could, he could be doing that if he comes into our space. And for at Nutanah Collegiate, that is one thing that Candace Gadwa is going to be doing. That's a plan for her because there were some students and some staff that were asking that as well.
Awesome. Thank you. And I think maybe there's an opportunity for PD for the trustees, hey?
Come on down. All invited.
I'll dust off my sewing machine. Any other questions? I, I don't think there's anything more I can add that hasn't already been expressed besides my own thank you. And I, I was really profoundly touched by your comments about leaning on each other to make this happen. And I really like that we have elementary schools and high schools that are working together. We have students of all ages interacting. I think that's so critically, critically important. So thank you very much for taking time and putting together a wonderful presentation for us that we really, really appreciate it. And when, when it's time to make skirts, we'll give you a call.
Please do.
Good. Thanks again.